This conference will now be recorded.
April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Roll call.
Member DeBaptiste.
Present.
Member Sigidi.
Present.
Member Sutherland.
Present.
Vice Chair Khalil.
Here.
And Chair Ferber.
Here. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store.
Okay, any changes to the agenda? Modifications? No. Okay, hearing none, we'll move on. Public comment? Brightums not on the agenda.
Except to say that we moved up in the world, we have a new clock.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Okay. Approval of the minutes, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So, one agenda that we had that we weren't able to review last meeting, let's start with that. And that's a discussion approval of the proposed seawall ordinance. And staff has brought us a couple of contractors who specialize in the seawall world. And, or Kelly, excuse me, or Christie, we could talk, start with you if you'd like, right? And your email to us.
Sure. I think, you know, we've looked at the seawall ordinance a couple of times and so I take no real pride in drafting this in terms of any kind of technical requirements. And I think that's why we asked a couple of contractors to be here. Because as you recall, this sort of started from setting a minimum height for the seawall so that dealing with resiliency issues, that we could start having a minimum seawall height going forward. And as we sort of got into this, we ran into some other issues in terms of substantial improvement or substantial repair and extending out further from the property line. And those are the things that were addressed in sort of the most recent draft. But I think we wanted to hear from some of the contractors in terms of issues that they think the town should be thinking about because I think the way we left it was, should we turn this over to some folks for more of a technical review and perhaps some technical amendments to address maybe some of the issues that the town should be thinking about in terms of seawalls?
Makes sense. Makes sense. Any comment here? Or members, okay. Let's go ahead and open it up. Can we ask you to come up, please? Name, address.
My name is Mitch Bryant with B and M Marine Construction. We do quite a bit of work in your town and throughout the South Florida from Jupiter to Miami. We average around three hundred jobs a year. So we know what we're, what we've been doing with in most cities. I did have a chance to read the code, the revisions to it. I agree with you guys a hundred percent, go into the five-point-O minimum. I wouldn't put a maximum on it because the elevations of the houses are getting so high, you need a seawall to retain that. Some cities have put a limit and there's, there's issues with that right now, going through in Boca especially. The biggest thing that I've, from reading there that I would change is you guys in your town code do not have a specific width on the dock. It does, it's not clear. We had problems with it in the past in your town. Most municipalities measure from the wet face of the seawall. That is where the seawall panel, where the water hits the seawall panel. I recommend, because your code is already, knowing your code, it's five feet from edge of the cap, I would recommend doing seven feet from the wet face. Most cities are that way right now in Palm Beach. So that's, my two cents is to clarify the seawall dock measurements from wet face out. And same with the boat lift. Right now, you guys are, I think it's twenty feet from edge of cap, you measure, you know, something from the wet faces, twenty percent canal width, something along those lines, just to be a hundred percent clear so there is no issues. Other than that, I think everything else has been good from what I was reading in there. The return walls to hold the elevation from the neighbors from flooding them or elevation changes. It's really about, about it that would really need to be changed. In my two cents, it was pretty simple and clean. There was nothing, nothing more.
Does this help clean up a lot of issues that you've dealt with over the years?
Yes. The only thing that would be left would be from the, from the wet face measurement for the total dock width, just to be clear that there's no issues. But yeah, the two-foot overhang that you guys put on, that was a previous issue from other contractors up here. I remember that was a mess and that's what really started this, this issue. So that is, that's fair. And then everything else is governed anyway from the Army Corps and the DEP. So we have to obey by those, by eighteen inches, which you guys have, that you put in there. So you guys are on the right track with it all. I just recommend the clarifying of the wet face measurement for the dock and the boat lift.
Okay. Questions to Mitch?
I do. Hi, how you doing? Thanks for coming today. Couple of things. One is primarily what, if our, if our goal is to provide an easier way of promoting or getting people to change over their seawalls, what do you think would be help in getting these seawalls approved faster and more efficiently and more economically? I know that's something you probably should.
Well, from the municipality, you guys have always, I mean, out of most cities, you guys are actually one of the easier ones and faster ones. I assume just because you have a smaller amount of unit owners, but the, you guys are doing it good on your side, honestly. I mean, there's not much, you know, internally, you guys knock out a permit.
Remember, this is on tape, buddy.
Yeah. You guys are having like a love turnaround for us. That's really good. I mean, I'm averaging two months at Boca, Del Ray, like it's, and you guys are doing good. The only thing that differently is the electric and plumbing has always been a little bit of a problem for what we do because we do it, we act, there's sub-permits that go underneath ours. So that is, to do the difference with that is it gets attached. I mean, it's nothing, I mean, you guys already do that, so it's.
So when you apply, do you, do you make the applications FDP and Army Corps?
Correct. So we have to do all the.
As a contractor, you do that, right?
Yes. So we do all the environmental first and then submit it to the city with the structural drawings at that time.
Okay. You submit it to the city, but at that time is all, are all the approvals from FDP and Army Corps completed?
Yes, sir.
What's the timeframe on that?
They take, depending on where you are, if you're on directly on the intercoastal, it could take up to a year to get Army Corps approval. But on average, you're four to six months environmentally.
Okay. So on the Army Corps, it's up to a year if you're on the interco, direct intercoastal, right? I understand that. FDP is four to six months?
Yep. You could get it sooner, but on average, it's, you know.
What do you find there that is the cause of that timeframe?
It's their workload. So I think Army Corps only has four people right now reviewing all of, so we're, most of our Army Corps is going to Texas, DC, a lot of reviews going up there. And then DEP saying they're just, they're all understaffed for the amount of work that's being done down here.
Okay. So at times you have to get a permission if, or if, if FDP has no jurisdiction, we have a lot of, a lot of canals here that have, they have no jurisdiction. And you still have to go case by case. Would it help if we had a blanket for certain areas that already had that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So Boca Raton's made a map.
I guess I'm asking a question. I have the answer to.
Yeah. The canal jurisdiction map is what Boca did. So they have already done this about fifteen years ago with us. So yes, you could do that and I could send that to you guys so you could see exactly how they did it. It's, it's great. It's, makes life a lot easier.
It does. And I'm sorry, I did ask the question, I knew the answer to, I'm sorry. But I think it would help us, and I've already spoke to the town attorney about this, about getting that resolved in our town. Because there's a lot of canals, there's a lot of areas where we don't need FDP. And every time we make people, and they can be next door to each other, we make them go, go down and get the letter, it's stupid. Really stupid.
And now they have DDPs, actually not even issuing the letter anymore.
Right. Thank you. I want you to tell everybody that, because I told people that, they don't believe me.
What's the differential between DEP, you know, oversight and not DEB oversight?
Whether they're sovereign lands?
Exactly.
Okay. Whether the, the, I'm sorry, you could answer.
No, he's, he's, it's if they own it, if sovereign lands, and then they're also doing the protection of seagrass now, that's falling underneath them also.
So the Johnson seagrass, if there's Johnson seagrass, it's, that's a big one.
Yeah. So we only have like a seagrass growing season currently is from June first to September thirtieth. So we can only do permits with seagrass studies between that time. You know, we can do it a little bit outside, but that survey has to be conducted during those timelines. So.
Yeah. So it's, it's stuff like this that can, can make it easier for our residents to go ahead and.
You're, you're definitely on to the canal jurisdiction map. That would be a huge help for the residents.
Yeah.
And who does that? Our engineer? Town engineer?
No, we'd have to get with, we'd have to get with FDP, right? Give them the map through the GIS. Lisa can generate that fairly easily. And we get them to take a look at the entire town and say, what is within the town? Now, there's some caution to that because we have some areas that we have to be alert about.
Yes.
But there are ones that are much easier to handle. For example, the ones around Sable Island.
McCormick Mile.
McCormick Mile. There's some, some ones over there that I think are, are non, not an issue whatsoever.
Correct.
So I think there are, and even on the south end, some of the inland canals that go east and west, I think, can, they're going to justify being non-sovereign, that, that that would help in that time period.
It really would. That'd be the biggest help for timeline.
The other thing that I have a question, you, you had made mention that you suggested seven feet from the wet face of the seawall. Why seven and not five?
So your code right now reads five feet from edge of cap. The problem is, is that your cap widths all vary.
Right.
So seven feet is a fixed point from your wet face, because that doesn't, the overhang wouldn't matter. That overhang, the DEP and the Army Corps see that overhang part of impacts. So that's why everything's always just measured from that wet face out. And so Del Ray, for instance, is seven feet from wet face. And that's, that's exactly what most, you know, other cities are going to, you know, also.
Because the wet face is the property line, right?
What was that?
Wet face is basically the property line.
So not, so in most cities, Ocean Ridge is, the property line is out in the water more than where the seawalls are. You guys are a little bit different here, but most other cities, the property lines are very close within inches of the wet face. But you guys are definitely, have a lot of properties that are behind the property line. The seawalls are. So you couldn't, that's, and the wording that you guys have with the property line and, in there is a little odd.
Yeah. There's some other issues with dealing with the property line that, that would make it problematic.
Yes.
So we, we almost have to go with the wet face.
Yes.
I, I agree with that.
So the, you can, if your property line's out in the water, ninety-five percent chance the DEP and the Army Corps will not allow you to build all the way out to then gain that land. So they're limiting you to that eighteen inches, twenty-four inches. I just got a three-foot permit up in Highland Beach because there was, there was issues with it, it took five years to get. But, you know, it's, there's stuff that, you know, you can do, but they will not let you land grab, is what most cities are calling that much.
Yeah. So, so she'll just, for example, in the case that we won up in McCormick Mile, based on a case called Travis, the property lines have now been extended, subject to the waterway, to the center line of the canal. So we can't go with the property line because that would be problematic. So we almost have to go with the wet face. And, you know, there is that plat, the platted.
So if we, if the person redoes their seawall and it goes out eighteen inches as we allow, is that a new wet face if it's still behind the property line?
Yes, most cities, yes.
So then their dock goes out another eighteen inches?
Their dock is seven feet from that wet face.
But you only do that one time?
So there's not been a limit. So I've always thought this, but there's never been a limit. So seawalls are supposed to last thirty to forty years and now they're pushing sixty years. So this is the first time that we're all really going through this together. We, nobody has brought up the fact that if you keep putting seawall in front of seawall in front of seawall. But the DEP and Army Corps has been saving all the records now, in the past they haven't. So we're assuming that they're going to be fighting that in the future if you try to keep doing that.
And, and the width of the seawall starts to come into play. So we have some restrictions there, you know, just to say seven feet from the wet faces could be problematic. We'd have to take a look at that a little bit closer. And you raise the point, you have the eighteen inches, you have the width of the seawall, the depth of the seawall, I should say.
They're two different designs of seawall, yes.
Different, so, you know.
Yeah, all that's incorporated into that two-foot overhang that you guys referenced into that.
But they go out long, they go out more than two feet.
No, inside the cap.
Oh, inside the cap.
Yep.
So if we have a, if we have a maximum seven, seven feet from the face, wet face, but a, but a maximum two-foot cap, right?
Yep.
The issue is we'll have to talk to Lisa and their team about whether or not that's, you know, satisfies some of the concerns.
Yep.
And we do have some narrow canals that all of a sudden, if you're, if you're adding on fifteen feet both sides, it could create a problem.
Twenty with the boat lift.
Yes, twenty, correct.
Yeah. So we'd have to take a look to see how that all is incorporated.
But that's what I'm saying, now is the time to make it spelled out perfectly. So there's no issues that we've had in the past with trying to, everybody read the code differently and it was, it was very difficult at the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mitch?
Questions?
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kelly, do we have anyone else, any other contractors here today? Oh, thank you very much.
How we doing?
Fantastic. Good morning.
I'm Art. Morning folks. I'm Andy with Andy PH Marine Construction.
Your, your name and address, please.
Andrew Paulus, address five-sixty Northeast Twenty-Six Court, Palm Beach.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Arthur Teedman, same address.
Okay, great. Wonderful. Thank you. Well, you've heard the discussion so far, please give us any input you have as well.
Yep, and agree with a lot of what Mitch had to say in terms of compliance, where you guys are at with lengths, heights, elevations are certain that are important, the five-foot minimum, it's been pretty standard across most of Broward and being adopted more or less across Palm Beach now. As far as having a maximum, I, same thing, I agree, some of these property lots are getting bigger and bigger. So to have a limit on top of them without being a case by case is a little tough to put in stone. When we talk about resilience, I think something that would be important for the town would be to really inspect what's being done. Unfortunately, there's a lot of repairs that go on, two walls that really need to just be redone altogether. So something that may be beneficial to the town is if there's going to be a significant repair, such as doing like a big cap elevation raise or something like that, maybe having an engineer come and sign off on the wall stating that, one, it's capable of sustaining the new load, and two, that the wall was still in pretty good shape. Unfortunately, we finished doing work over off Sable not long ago and during that time we took our time just driving around the canals and seeing what was going on. We saw a fair amount of work that had been done where the old seawall that was underneath, you know, a cap raise or something along those lines, was in pretty bad shape. And then unfortunately, you know, the new homeowner came and built this massive hardscape up on top of it too, but.
Like a retaining wall. The wall, the wall gets neglected.
Right. You can clearly see that wall's not going to do well with the extra amount of pressure that goes on top. So I think from a resilience standpoint, making sure that we're not going through doing these improvements that are not going to last just from a budgetary purpose. PACE financing has now come in and they offer up to three hundred thousand dollars that they can roll into the property taxes. That could be an avenue for a financing perspective.
Explain that to him. Tell me about that.
So PACE financing is effectively, was originally meant for energy efficiency improvements on properties. It was traditionally done for windows, air conditioner, solar panels, things like that. About a year ago, they adopted seawalls as part of that as well. You get deep into the perspective of it, but basically what happens is you're authorized at three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars, gets rolled into the property tax, and then it gets paid out, you know, just as part of the property tax bill, just like a typical loan would be. What's nice about it for the homeowner is pretty much anybody can get approved for it. And when they go to sell the house, turn the property over, either that loan can stay with the property and they can keep an improvement. My understanding of those, a lot of times that loan just gets closed out on turnover. It gives the homeowner up to a year to figure out how to be, how to start.
Spell that?
PACE, T-A-C. Which is an acronym, unfortunately, I don't have that on top of my head.
It's through Palm Beach County.
Yeah. Because that's a question, because we've heard that from some residents here, okay, we need a new seawall, how do we pay for it?
It certainly becomes one of the great limitations. Unfortunately, a lot of people are unfamiliar with what, what the cost of doing an infrastructure, I don't want to see what it does cost.
But it, it's a main component of the infrastructure of the property. You know, generally, it's one of the most expensive line items when you go to build a new property or develop a piece of property, you know, a single line item. The only other single line item that might exceed it would be the actual shell of the, the building. So it's, it's important to invest in that properly.
So I think, you know, making sure, ensuring that those seawalls are in pretty good shape before we start adding anything on to them, I think is a very, very important thing. And an engineer report on the seawall is not expensive, for a hundred-foot wall, maybe less than fifteen hundred dollars. So in the grand scheme of things, it would be nice for the town to know that if you're going to let one of your residents invest in an improvement like that, that it's going to last. But as Mitch stated, a lot of these walls around here are well exceeded their, you know, their useful life long. So in terms of going forward with new, with new construction as well, talking about resiliency, one of the things that I don't think the Florida Building Code does well is they allow us to use bare steel inside concrete here. Now, bare steel and salt water is about one of the worst compounds you can make. So simple solutions to fix that, galvanizing the steel will significantly increase the life, or using fiberglass rebar will significantly increase the life of both of those items. I think.
The number one contributor to seawall failure.
On top of that, just removing any type of galvanized hardware from any kind of docks that are put together, it seems to be one of the quickest failure points. But just increasing the demand on the building products and materials that are done and not using Florida Building Code as a baseline, because unfortunately, I think they get that wrong. If I build, if I build a balcony six miles from the coastline, I have to put galvanized steel in it. But if I build a seawall that's going to be wet every single day, I can use bare steel. That's wrong.
Yeah. And we're, we're asking more of seawalls than we've ever asked before, right? So to Andy's point earlier about raising something, so you have something that's thirty to sixty years old, now you're adding two, three feet of more, you know, pressure on it, and it, it's seeing something that it's never seen before, and we're asking more of it today than we've ever asked of it before. And then the impacts of going through that exercise can absolutely kill the, the seawall that exists. So seawall replacements are going to be way more common than seawall repairs as we move forward. So just keep that in mind when reviewing these.
And the downside of avoiding that or continuing to allow some of these things to go on, if the seawall blows out, it breaks, it has a catastrophic failure, which a catastrophic failure usually means that wall moves two or three feet. It could mean that the wall just flat out falls. Typically, at that point, we're at the point of needing to remove the wall altogether, which one becomes much more costly and it becomes a lot more detrimental to, one, the environment, two, your neighbors.
And the upwind improvements.
So just getting ahead of the ballgame there, I'm not sure exactly how much you can really dictate and force people to do these things, but it would be the smarter thing to do in the long run. One of the headaches we run into with homeowners is they plan on being in the home for five years, so they want a solution that's going to last five years. But as a town, thinking about the infrastructure of your city that's going to last as long as the city's going to last.
Yeah. You'll be pleased to know that we are undertaking some of those measures right now.
Fantastic.
There's, I'd like to know what, because I've heard different things, and I know you did some work on Sable and some other areas, and I know Mitch gets around quite a bit. And I hear different things about the different types of seawalls that, that can go on. Can you explain briefly? And Mitch, you can pipe up too, if you like. The, the different types of seawalls and what really is a recommended seawall that, that's to go on?
So primarily in, in the saltwater environments, some of what we have here, the two most common are going to be the true line hybrid seawall or the precast seawall. I'm going to let Mitch speak more to the precast seawall, because we don't do those. We, we do the true line hybrid seawall, so I'll speak to that. The way seawall is constructed is it's effectively a big land retaining wall. It holds all the upwind in place. So with a true line panel, you take the, the depth of the panel, if we're going to be ten foot out of the seabed off the floor, we're going to also be ten foot penetrated into the ground. Now at Ocean Ridge, we run into a lot of rock here. So what happens is we run into that rock layer, which when we did the one off Sable, which here just recently was about eight foot deep, and we were twelve foot exposed. So what we did is we take steel rebar, we drive that steel into the rock and we pin that, that panel down. Now, the big benefit of using the true line system, which I'm sorry if you're not familiar with it, but effectively it's a U-line cast-in-place panel. The U-shaped forms interlock with each other to create an enclosed capsule. The whole purpose of that initially was to protect the concrete and steel inside of it from the water hitting it and cracking, because that's what happens. When water energy hits concrete, it will crack. And then back to where bare steel becomes a problem, that bare steel gets wet with salt water, it begins to corrode, and it starts to shorten the life of that, that panel altogether. Again, I'll let Mitch kind of speak to the pros and cons of, of that system. But we have also, we replaced all the steel in our walls with either galvanized or fiberglass, just from a longevity's perspective. The true line system was designed to last a significantly long time. So the steel inside of it was what was going to be the failing point there. So we replaced that with galvanizing and fiberglass. Now, when it comes to the cap, the caps are similar. There's similar, there's different types of, you know, tiebacks, there's traditional precast batter pile, which is a concrete pile put on an angle in front of the wall, or traditionally what we would use is a helical ground screw, which is a solid stock piece of galvanized screw effectively that drills into the ground. Pros and cons on both again, we have two different systems.
It's a true, your system, when I saw it staged, and I've seen it from the, the intercoastal site too, it looks like it's plastic.
Yes. It's a modular. It's a modular form. So it's, think of it as a U-shaped.
Yep.
Piece of vinyl. It's ninety-two percent post-industrial recycled material. It has a virgin's layers, skin on top of it that keeps UV protected. And so what it, what it essentially is, is a cast-in-place concrete seawall that has a quarter inch of vinyl protection on both sides of it. Think of it as a leave-in-place form that also adds to the longevity and the, the integrity and the strength of it. So to Andy's point earlier about the penetration factor, you know, the penetration factor, a lot of the problems that, that are, that exist out there are where traditional seawalls are being undermined. You know, that hyperstatic load, water's pressing down and bringing soil through it. So you'll see a lot of times after-the-fact footers come in, you know, sometimes they're not permitted, sometimes they are, but to, to mitigate those issues. So down south in Broward, we see a lot more of them, where these after-the-fact footers were put in. And now that eighteen inches that we have to play with, we either have to demo that footer out or, you know, demo the whole wall out to, to, to install the wall. And so that, that can cause issues down the road. And then this being an interlocking tongue and groove system, there's nowhere for it to leak, there's nowhere for soil to come out through. It's, it's, every, every issue that exists with traditional seawalls has been, you know, figured out and, and completely. It's, it's every, every issue that exists with traditional seawalls has been, you know, figured out and, and completely
Minimized.
minimized. They, they don't, they don't exist with the hybrid seawall. You know, so you're either getting penetration or you're coming down through that sediment layer and finding the rock layer. And now when you, when we find that rock layer, we pull the sediment out of the panel, drop in the structural rebar, and we pin that rebar to the rock layer. And then we fill that entire cell with concrete. So now you have a pinned connection and a cementous connection to the sea floor that's never to move. You have fiberglass rebar. So all these components are designed and engineered to last, you know, inevitably, really, you know, there's all the, all the, the mistakes or misknowings that we knew thirty, forty, fifty years ago when we first started really building seawalls are, it's, it's twenty twenty-five. It's, it's, we're stepping, stepping the game up, stepping it up, making, making.
Great, okay, thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate that, okay? Any, any questions here, Mike? Did you, can you comment to Mitch's, the seven foot from wet face, is that what you see as well?
That seems to be a standard, and, and to his point about caps being various sizes. Our cap theoretically would be much, you know, less wide than what Mitch's may be because we aren't using batter piles. He's got a batter pile, so he's typically going to be, say, another fourteen inches wider than we would. So having a measurement point off the wet face would effectively make our overall dock the same space without him being able to have extra space because we're measuring it off of his cap where his overhang is significantly larger than ours. Uh, one of the things that I think is important and nice, you know, you guys talked about the twenty foot rule with the boats and the canals and everything. Fort Lauderdale is pretty liberal about what you can and can't do with your docks as far as how far you can go out. What they do is they limit the overall space you can take up, meaning if you have twenty feet to use, that includes your boat, your morgue piles, everything. And however you decide to make up that distance of your dock versus the size of your vessel, it's kind of up to the homeowner and the property itself. That I think is a, is a pretty good rule because you are going to have some people here that have very large vessels. But you may have some people here that have very small vessels, and a larger dock may accommodate them better without, you know, without having the same impact on the actual navigable channel.
So like the dolphin pilings, they're, they're, they're set off the wet face as well?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so there's just twenty-five feet off the wet face, the dolphin piles, or some number like that, right?
That's right. Yeah, and, and the city's varied. You have some that measure it off, you know, if you have an existing seawall, an old seawall, then sometimes the measurements are taken based off the old seawall instead of the new seawall. That way, the original property line is kind of intact. Because where we have the eighteen inch rule, we'll say it's loosely enforced. Don't try to do our best to do it, but unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of policing. And there's really not a great way for an inspector to come out and verify that eighteen inch rule, especially if the neighboring seawalls have also been updated. So the eighteen inch rule is certainly an honor system. But in order to maintain, keeping that, keeping your canals from being over, overwhelmed, measuring off the existing wall may help reduce some of that impact as well.
Or as you said, take a center line, you talked about that here, Ken as well, taking the center line and from the center line, how, what the width of the overall canal is.
They plated, yeah, that's right. Every canal gets plated, so you have an overall width that's a hundred feet. You know, your center forty-five percent is your navigable channel, and then each side gets their twenty-seven and a half feet. And then however you guys decide to work it out.
Canal jurisdiction is a good idea.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? Very much appreciate you guys coming out today, okay?
Lot to think about, Ken.
So there's a lot going on. This is, this is, uh, you know, it's, you know, listening to these guys, which was very helpful. You can see that the directions that we're taking are in the right way. So, um, and that's, uh, that's very helpful. We just, we have a little bit more work to do, but certainly this is a good start. And depending on what Town Attorney Christie says, I, I think we can, we could start with something and then, and then amend it as we go. And I think Lisa has a comment. Come on up.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Lisa Trepepi. I'm the town engineer. And let me just explain a little bit about what we do as the town engineer. Tara and I work together here to assist staff with reviews of applications that involve everything outside of the house, which primarily is drainage issues, elevations, roads, water, sewer. In this case, when we talk about seawalls, we pretty much, and, and thank you, Mitch, we try to do best we can to expedite all of these permits. What we look at is we try to, we first of all, make sure that the appropriate ARP or DEP permit has been applied and approved for. We don't really take that much time in the review of a seawall. However, our biggest concern is the elevation. And the elevation with respect to the existing pool deck, the elevation with respect to the proposed finished floor or the existing finished floor, if there's a renovation being done. So I really appreciate all the, both companies being here because we do deal with the folks that construct these seawalls because they have a lot of challenges, not only structurally, but elevation as well. Not only vertically, but sometimes these seawalls exist beyond the property line. I want to make that clear because we check the surveys, and at times the existing seawall is already encroaching outside of the property line. And if you're doing a renovation, you can't just get rid of the seawall and put a seawall back because you have an existing pool deck and a pool. So on a constructability standpoint, sometimes you, you do encroach outside of the property line. So I, I just, from all the reviews we've done, I just want to make sure that you understand that as well. So we get projects that come in. We pretty much make sure that the elevation works with the pool deck, the pool, the steps, the finished floor. And setting this at a minimum five is a great idea. For all these years, when people come in with renovations or new homes, for the most part, applicants have been very diligent in raising their seawalls. There really has not been any pushback with respect to raising the seawall. This proposed ordinance is, is a great first step. I think everything in here is, is, is good with, with what you're proposing. I am concerned about one thing because I'm the town engineer, and the town has some areas where there needs to be a seawall and has some areas where we own seawalls. And parts of our bridges have seawalls. So I want to make sure that we're not prohibited in any way of the town putting in a new seawall. And I'll tell you, the end of Hudson, there needs to be some type of a seawall moving forward. We did that project twenty, twenty-five years ago. Ken was the mayor at that time. We worked together. Putting in a rib, ribrap wall, back then, it worked fine. It's been about twenty-five years, I would say.
Yeah.
And now the adjacent property owners put up hard seawalls, so we're going to have to do something. There's a gap there. I just want to make sure that the code allows the town and the town's assets to be secured and allowed to be able to put in some type of a seawall, whether it's a hard seawall or a living seawall. We also have seawalls on Inlet K Drive that are the town's. And I, and we need the ability from time to time to repair that seawall. So I want to make sure again that, that the code allows that to happen. And thirdly, we work with the DOT annually in making repairs to our three existing bridges in Inlet K, Sable Island, and Island Drive. Part of those components are seawalls, those are ours as, as well. So I didn't want you to forget that we are part of this, we, the town are part of this, of this project of making this ordinance. And I don't want us to be prohibited in any way to make those capital improvements in the future.
Should, should we add language to this proposed modification that if an existing seawall is outside of the property line, that that has to be repaired prior to a new house construction? Because you wouldn't, if the new, if there's no pool deck and it's already exceeding the property line, that's when that repair should be made. Correct?
Brought into compliance.
Right, brought into compliance.
Yeah.
I guess I'm a little thick. I'm trying to understand what you're saying, so I apologize.
You're starting from scratch.
Well, we already have that. That's what we're planning on doing, right? And any new seawall.
But if they don't, but if they don't, if they don't propose to repair their seawall before their house, make their seawall in compliance.
It's in there. There's a provision there that if they substantially improve.
So they, they then have to make that seawall in compliance.
Correct. They have to show that it's either in compliance or they have to bring it up into compliance.
That we passed that not too long ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
And I think it would fall under that. I think we're fine.
To Lisa's point, she had already conveyed that to me, so I have prepared some language that would exempt out seawalls that are necessary for government infrastructure appears real property. So it's exempt from the requirement that exists in our current code that's reiterated here that you can't build a new seawall if you don't have a principal structure. So what we're talking about is some of the town's property where there is no structure, but where we have to have a seawall to maintain the, the town's property.
I see what you're saying.
Have we done a survey for that, what you're talking about? Do we have a survey of the town of our seawalls, Lisa? And where, where we don't have a seawall, I think Mitch, you mentioned to me some of theirs. Hudson.
Midtusen is the same thing.
Yeah. So I mean, do we, have we ever done a, have you ever done a survey of the town of what the town's seawall?
So the, the.
Seawalls are.
The town doesn't have a seawall at the end of Hudson. It's a, a, a hard seawall.
Yeah.
That's one location. The other location is either side of Inlet K Drive prior to the approach of the bridge.
Yeah.
On both the north and south side, we own those two lots. They're vacant. There are existing seawalls on both sides. When Ken Shank was the manager, he did some minor repairs. I think he put a cap on it. We've been monitoring it, and probably within the next ten years, there's going to have to be some, some modification to that existing seawall. I don't know if that's going to mean putting a wall in front of that wall, but we're going to have to do something because the wall's been there for a very long time, and we haven't done any major repairs to the wall on either side.
To Shield's point, I think, and to what you're just saying, I think it would be helpful if, if the town authorized, because we can't direct you to do it ourselves, to do the inventory, right? And then also do an assessability of the, of the, of the bridges. For example, I know Island Drive is probably due for something. You can just look at it and tell. And if there's a break, it's a breach, it's going to be right around that bridge. Sable is a little bit different, but it certainly is deserving of that assessment, and same with Inlet. But the most pressure is on Island Drive, or on Harbor Island, no doubt.
And certainly, real quick, Ken, too, also, you and I've talked about the adjoining property owner, making sure that to these bridges, the adjoining property owner has adequate and updated seawall, right? Because it's only as good as the connection point from the, from there to the, to the adjoining property owner, right? It's like, wow.
Right. When we, when we do our reviews, we check elevations, we check the permits.
Yeah.
We also check adjacent properties and how it makes the connection or doesn't make the connection to the adjacent properties seawall.
Yeah, so I guess a recommendation that I would propose with the consensus of the commission, that you go back to the commission and say that we're recommending an assessment of the, of the town properties and the bridges to make sure that our seawalls are.
Okay. Just, and, and it's funny that you mentioned this, Island Drive. We just received from the DOT the assessment of the bridge on Island Drive. They are mandated every two years to provide the town their structural assessment. And then we take that to our contractor, which is Murray Logan, the, the folks we work with on the seawall on the ocean not too long ago. And we make the repairs according to their report. So Island Drive actually just came out, and it's been sent to the contractor for them to make an assessment. So we do do that, but we, you know, but we can create an inventory. I just want to.
They look, they look at the bridge.
Yeah.
They look at the bridge.
They're now looking at the seawall.
Well, so that's why I'm bringing up the fact that we have to make sure that the, the code allows us to do what we need to do beyond the bridge where the connection of the bridge and the seawall is. And then it connects to, like the, like you were saying, that it connects to individual private properties. The majority of the seawalls in town, as you know, are owned by the, you all, the landowner. It's, it's a little bit different than other municipalities because some other municipalities, they own all the seawalls, or the county owns the seawalls. In this case, there are, there are only a few areas where the town is responsible for the maintenance and will of the seawall. So.
One other comment about the elevation. Somebody said they didn't recommend maximum elevation. I disagree with that. I think, I think it has to be tied to the property in some fashion because, you know, unfortunately, we live in a society that people can take things to the extreme. And so if we think about tying a maximum elevation to the base foundation of the home or some other measure, is that something that can be done? I mean, isn't that what you're basically doing now?
We. Yeah, go ahead.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa, because you're, you know this. The Florida Building Code only allows you to have a wall six feet greater than the, the neighbors on each side. So if you say you wear it a five, am I correct?
I, I think so. We don't allow, we don't allow that differential to be that great. We, we've never allowed that.
I mean, is that in our code, though? That's now, I mean, raised the issue. So I want to make sure we have something.
We can check the Florida Building Code. We've never had an issue of somebody being so egregious that they are six feet taller than, than their adjacent property.
Well, you know what? Unfortunately, you know, I wish I could say that.
We can check the building. I know, we've not, I don't think.
Well, we just, we just, the, the one that was just, you approved, that just built on Sable Island, as you, as you go across Sable Island to the left-hand side, is quite a, quite a wall, right? And I, I assume it went through you.
Concrete dock.
The concrete dock and huge wall. I mean, I mean, the height of that, that stage, it's two, you know, it's two sections. And it just seemed extremely high because on the other side, that's on the south side, southwest side. On the northwest side, also a new seawall was put in place, which feels like it's, it's quite a bit lower than the one on the, on the south side. I mean, I just visually walking it, I, I don't know.
There's, there's, there's no doubt that the FEMA maps that we're following have a severe vertical impact on finished floors that's causing a severe vertical impact, severe, meaning three or four feet difference than it was before. And so finished floors that, that were eight or nine are now
Yeah.
thirteen, fourteen.
Right.
And so, so that's how we look at maximum heights. As that finished floor is being raised, how does that relate to the seawall? So as the floors come up, those seawalls are going to come up basically the same.
Yeah. Would you, would you humor me and take?
I'm not a fan of the maximum because some elevations, the town has different elevations throughout the ridge. You know, Harbor Drive North, Harbor Drive South has a ridge.
It can be tied to something. I'm just saying.
It might, it, I guess.
Why don't you give it some thought?
Yeah, I mean, I, we can give it some thought.
Given, given where people tend to be. And just see if there isn't something that, and I, you know, can be very conservative, mind you, but.
We can, and we'll check the Florida Building Code too.
And, and take a look at that. I'm curious. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
If you'd like to come up, please. Add to that.
Lisa, you could, you could come up with something that helped bridge the delta between the finished floor.
We can, I, I guess we can.
And then, you know, the, so the finished floor to finished cap height, then, so you have that delta margin that people can play with and design around. And then you have another delta from the top of the new cap to the existing old cap or the neighbor, or the neighbor. That, whatever that is. So they can design around those two different, and give them, you know, some type of margin. But yeah, it's, it's coming. I mean, over at Sable, we were four feet higher than, than the neighboring property on the, on the north, but on the south.
I'm sure he looked really bad because he was four feet high.
Well, it looked bad, but.
Looked severe, four feet is a big difference.
And how much on the other end, did you say?
On the other end, we were basically flush with the neighboring seawall. Well, the neighboring seawall is retaining wall.
Yeah.
So you have, you know, people make up the, the height differences in either coming up the whole way with, with a wall, or they'll come up to meet the code with the wall, and then they'll come back and build a retaining wall to, to meet their pool elevation. You know, but ideally, people want to design a home that flows well, and it's, you know, it's South Florida. So the new look is, you know, flat out. Something else to point out was.
Every, every.
They want what they want.
Every application is so different when we get, okay, so now we have different styles. Like he's saying, now it's like this infinity thing, so, you know, they're, they're going to want their wall. It has to work with, it has to work with the site plan, overall site plan.
Well, like at, at one eighteen, Marlin Drive, we're doing a multi-level. We have a multi-level cap and, and making that up. So, you know, you're, you're, there's so many things that are left up into interpretation. And, and what comes into play is when we're going to sell this stuff, having a, having black and white rules that we can work around and give guidance on to developers and architects and homeowners to make these decisions versus a gray matter, you know, gray matter makes, you know, creates chaos. It, you know, that now this architect has an idea and this person has another idea, and no one has a, a black and white thing to work off of. So the more black and white we can be, the easier it is for us to do business and things to happen in town.
Just testifying exactly what I'm saying. Thank you.
And where do you see this now, what, any other town?
In terms of the elevations?
Yeah, the, the.
So.
You were trying to stack it between the deltas, between the old seawall, the new seawall.
Not everybody has a maximum.
Well, not everybody has correlations. So pop on a beach, you know, maximum five foot, ten inches, doesn't matter what the home is. Fort Lauderdale, you have maximums if there's existing structure, but if you put a new structure on, then you're allowed to go to the base flood elevation of the new structure, if they do a knockdown or rebuild. But, you know, the minimum elevation issue that we ran into in Fort Lauderdale was there's a lot of homes where the finished floor was four foot, but the, but the required seawall height was four foot still. But you could end up in a situation where the seawall is now higher than the finished floor of the, of the property. So you ran into some issues with that, but the core kind of came through and said, that's what we want. That's what it needs to be. And city planners agreed with that, and I agree with it too. In Boynton, Boynton's the same way. They, they just changed everything with the FEMA flood elevation. So we had a wall that's going to go into six foot elevation, but had we waited another month to submit the permit, it would have to go to an eight foot elevation because the base level, that's a nox.
And, and that, and in that case, it would have been almost two and a half feet higher than the.
And in that case, it would have been almost two and a half feet higher than the finished floor.
All you're doing is kind of justifying the worth it is, it would be to take a look at it. Take a look at it.
As things develop, you know, just put it in front of the people that do this and we're happy to give our two cents. That's why we're here today.
Okay.
And then as far as developing code, Lisa touched on like living seawalls, you know, having, I don't know.
And we don't even acknowledge that at this point now.
I think you should still encourage it, though. You got one coming your way here soon. You know, I think if the FDP is about it and the Army Corps signs off on it and it's within the setback criteria and stuff like that, those are things that we should absolutely encourage, you know, to see marine environment. You know, the hardened shoreline, the seawall is a major contributor to the water quality. You know, we don't have the natural mangrove, you know, shorelines that used to be. So anything that comes across from an environmental perspective, you know, should be viewed and encouraged as a positive thing.
More, look, I mean, there's a lot to talk about, obviously.
Oh, yeah.
This is not, this isn't a one size fits all. And that's why, that's why we, yeah, that's why we review them. We try to expedite them. We look to the Corps and the DEP, you know, their guidance as well. I mean, we don't go against what the Corps or the DEP has permitted them. Unless it's something really adverse, but it's not.
We aren't usually hung up in Ocean Ridge because of Ocean Ridge. Or generally any municipality. Generally, every municipality, they have a fairly black and white code that we're able to work through and deal with in their review process. They're reviewing permits. You're just much more efficient than the FDP. One thing that, and this isn't a town thing, it's more a county thing, but in the county of Broward, they can authorize the issuance of permits for the DEP and the Army Corps. It's a null and exemption clause down there. A lot of, you know, residential seawalls and docks would fall within that exemption. But Palm Beach doesn't have that same benefit, so we still have to go to the Corps. We have to go to the DEP. And the Corps, unfortunately, does not have a required timeline to respond. So if we submit something to Broward, it gets, they have to respond within 30 days. We send it to the DEP in Palm Beach, it's 45 or 60 days and the Corps can be whatever it does. We've had permits taken, you know, over a year.
That's why this jurisdiction map that we talked about would be helpful, right?
And from a financial. From a design perspective, yeah.
Yeah, planning.
I got that.
Planning, you know, being able, people being able to show up into your community, whether they're buying a new home or getting ready to renovate their home and make a big financial decision to improve their backyard. Knowing what you can and can't do and it's being and having it very clear is, it just, it makes it so much easier to design around. If there's gray matter or open-endedness, people stretch and people take and, you know, it just makes for a mess.
Well, thank you very much, everyone. Really appreciate it. Lisa, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Well, any public comment?
I have a question. Terry Brown, Harbor Drive South. Where I live, you know, like someone mentioned, Harbor Drive has got the elevated ridge and then everything goes down to zero. And one of the neighbors that was building a brand-new house would look out from his seawall. He can see the bottom of the sand. He has a lift and he has to wait for high tide to get his boat out. But the question came up was, can he ever dredge out the sediment that built up over the years that has elevated the sea bottom because of the Johnson grass issue? He can do, he can actually apply and have it when he has to.
You have to apply to get the approval.
And would the whole channel have to be dredged? Just his property? Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, they've done many, while your predecessor used to do that quite a bit.
Yeah. You remember Bob Merkel had that 70-foot yacht. In fact, he had two boats there, but he never had it dredged out.
Commissioner comments?
I just have a couple of quick questions. Christie, in your, this April 15th memo in item six, talks about section 6625, which I didn't have time to look at. But if the structure suffers substantial damage, what's the definition of that, substantial damage? I think substantial improvement was 50% of the value, right? But I didn't know what substantial damage.
I'm sorry, say what section that is again.
Well, it refers to section 662-25. If the principal structure suffers substantial damage, were substantial improvements.
Correct. So if you recall, we went through at the end of last year, I think the beginning of this year, amendments that were being mandated based on some of the changes per FEMA. We updated substantial damage and substantial improvement and created a threshold. The threshold, it's a 50% of the principal structure, just the structure. And then we created some exceptions to that if it's based on storm hardening and also limited to, I believe, a two-year look back. So that references to that, those definitions in that section, which would then mandate removing your seawall and compliance with this.
And then the other comment I have is in the actual rewrite. And that would be on page three to make it, item five. And it's dealing with section 64-77B. And this is throughout the document. It says, no eventual docks maximum projection into the waterway unreasonably interfere with navigation of the abutting waterway or existing easement rights. Is there anything clearer than that? I thought the one item that we discussed was defining the width of a canal and then coming up with how much you can allocate to each sign. But this is just kind of open. It doesn't really exist.
Right, because one of the issues that we're dealing with is if property owners, technically their property rights extend out to the center line of, say, a private canal. That's true. But at the same time, their neighbors are going to have easement rights to navigate that canal to get in and out. So without a map that could prescribe these somewhat more precise calculations, we have to put some kind of language in there so that if someone has those property rights, that they then couldn't extend their seawall and dock out that would reasonably interfere with the adjoining property owner's easement rights that they have to utilize that same canal. Or perhaps if FDEP and/or Army Corps have jurisdiction, they might have also some limitations on how far out they could go regardless of where their property line is.
I was just trying to see if there was a definition of reasonably.
Well, that's what I think that's.
Is there a minimum?
Well, that's what you're talking about. I think Fort Lauderdale says, hey, listen, they take, you know, they look at the width. They apply, I think, 45% of that for the navigable area. And then from that 45% to each side, if there is two sides to the canal, you can do whatever you want in that space, anything you want. You want to put a huge dock out, a floating dock or dolphin pilings, whatever you want, you can do that. So they tried to define that. That's what I think I heard earlier, right? And that's probably a good idea, but you have to probably almost go and map out every canal at that point. You'd have to survey every canal and probably, I would think, Lisa, it's a big undertaking.
Sure.
Yeah.
Or is there a minimum width in the center of a canal?
Again, you'd have to go, you'd have to survey, you'd have to survey the canal, wouldn't you?
Well, no. So if you have a small canal and everybody comes out 27 and a half feet or whatever the number is and you're left with 10 feet or six feet of navigable water between the docks, how do you do that?
You can't do that.
Right. So how do you protect it in here? Because this is just wide open, unreasonably interfering.
Have we looked at it in the past? Anyone? Lisa, have you looked at?
No. You know. The issue becomes, it's a legal issue because some of these canals are privately owned. And we don't know if they're privately owned with easements on top of that ownership. We don't know what those documents state. If you, if you put a box, if you tell people, well, we're going to do this and they come back and tell you, I have, I own this to the center line and you have no right to tell me otherwise, then we have other issues beyond a technical issue of stating 45% should be a throughway or not. It's very, very complicated. You also, the folks on the intercoastal side have a throughway to deal with. So ownership on that is complicated as well because of that throughway. So there's, you can talk about it on a legal standpoint.
Yeah, there's other issues that come into play.
Of course.
And historically, that's why we've dealt with five feet to be the measure.
Yes.
Because we have other issues that we don't have long enough to talk about right now. So I think it would be hard pressed for me to go beyond that five foot for a dock because I know these other issues.
One real quick thing to your point, Mark, was some of the cities just designate canals under 50, canals over 50, canals under 70, whatever the case may be, just kind of split that up. That way you don't run into that issue of a narrow canal having the same rules as a 100, 200-foot wide canal.
Thank you. Yeah. Well, this is the starting point, right, that we're talking about here, right? And other comments, Ken?
No, I don't have any other comments.
No. Jason?
No.
No. I mean, so if we feel as if, my only comment, I keep, and I keep asking the same question and I kind of, so this would cover build new, right, new construction, right? And/or, as we talked about, significant repair, right, of the home. Yep. How about significant disrepair of the existing seawall that's in place today? We heard about that, right, where there's a lot of seawalls or have passed their useful life, right? And then the tidal flooding as well. Does that, does it cover those three items here, this document, you feel?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's important, right? It's a starting point, gentlemen. So maybe what we do is take this as a starting point, send it up to the commissioners and then continue doing, continue doing the research on, you know, what we've heard today, the seven-foot wet face, we can look at that, the jurisdictional map, look at that, right? Pay financing, that was a great idea because, great, thank you for bringing that up because some people are asking, how do I pay for this? And the government exemption, Lisa, that was good as well. So you can add those in, right? So is there a motion?
Some move to send it up to the commission for their comment and passage, subject to further revisions on our part.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, thank you, gentlemen. Really appreciate your time today.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very helpful.
Because I learned too much.
It's a lot to it.
A lot to it, right? Lisa helped, too. Our first, our first defense. So the quasi-judicial hearing of 6855 North Ocean Boulevard, this is continuation. Let me see. Christie, do we need to go through the ex parte communication here as well? Okay. At this time, any ex parte communication should either be disclosed by identifying the subject of the communication and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place or a correspondence provided to the town clerk made part of the public record. In addition, each member of the commission may identify the existence of any investigations or site visits he or she has conducted or any expert opinions received and disclose any conflicts of interest on this matter. We, in the previous, Jason, the previous meeting, we did make disclosures. Christie, she'll make the same disclosures this time around as well?
You don't need to make the same disclosures, but if anything has occurred since the first hearing, then we should disclose that.
None, none of mine. No change. Okay, wonderful.
I have no change.
So let's continue this. Tara, you were great to provide a list of questions, which I think you had taken from the meeting. Can you go through those questions again, please?
Can I swear in the people?
Excuse me, let's swear in, please.
Will anyone wishing to speak on the item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you are called forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record and whether or not you've been sworn in and please speak directly into the microphone.
Excuse me, I didn't mean, Corey, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to bring to the discussion.
Mr. Chairman, board members, no, we have no additional presentation from the prior.
Okay, great. Thank you. Please.
Tara Bamber, town engineer. So I sent a list of comments to Kelly on April 1st. I had also talked to the engineer record before that.
For the applicant?
Yeah, talked about these same issues. So number one was pre-approval for DOT, a proposed sidewalk and right-of-way. So they took that proposed sidewalk out of the right-of-way and they connected, should be in your packet on the engineering plan. Right, they got the, really, they got the updates? So the previous plan, not the site plan, yeah, keep going. Yeah, okay. So the previous plan, the sidewalk went from that existing trail from the north, went into the right-of-way on DOT to the south and then went back to the adjacent south property. So they took that out and they connected the sidewalk. So if you go to the north, that little path that's through the previous area. And then you can see the striping that goes to the building. And then it goes along the building, south, 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 and dumps out at the south, basically, hardy lot. And you'll see a ramp, there's ramps. You can see it very well, but. So it's the concrete hatch.
On the north side?
Yeah, so it starts at the north, there's a striping that goes across to the building side. And the sidewalk has like a concrete hatch, which is some dots.
Okay.
And it keeps going south and then it, there's another ramp that brings it to that south parking lot. That goes across, that'll probably need some striping into the south property sidewalk. That's hard to see, but it is there. So they did remove it from the DOT right-of-way. That was my first comment. So then the other one, it's confirmed, I need to pre-approve for permits. I didn't get like an approval of that. That's kind of like an unspoken thing.
Right.
Third was the site triangle for landscape and other infrastructure. So they provided a site go-down. Yeah, there. Yeah, so go up. So they provided the site triangle distance from DOT design manual and they showed the, it's a 14-foot out from, sorry, that was okay. From the line that you would see, I don't know. You would see the edge of pavement of the intersection. So you see that 14.5. This is all DOT geometry. The only thing that I was a little concerned with, it was for 25 miles per hour. Well, that road is, oh, wait, is it 25 miles per hour at that point?
I think.
Yeah, sorry, okay.
No, it goes 25 miles an hour there, yeah, but it's 20.
It depends on where.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, yeah. I was thinking 35, but I forgot that it went 25 up there. So that's all per DOT manual standards. So I feel that they answered that question.
Can we stop? And by the way, I appreciate if there's any comments. Does that take, I mean, the grade differential is what, right, as you're going down that hill?
All right, so if you go back up a little bit on that plan, where is there, Kelly, there's a cross-section right there? So they provided a cross-section from the existing edge of pavement. It goes up at 9.3% into the property, the driveway for 25 feet. It goes up at 9.3% into the property, the driveway for 25 feet. That all slopes at 9.3%, up to the drive aisle. So, I don't, 9.3 might sound high, but it's actually not. So, they're showing how they're going to connect to the existing.
Right. I think one of the questions we had, though, how, is the car sitting like this while waiting to make a left-hand turn or a right-hand turn? What's the grade differential? What, how's the, what's the geometry of the car as it's sitting, waiting to make a turn?
At 9.3%.
Okay.
So, I did have this little, like, mini study with a smart calendar level all the time.
Yeah.
And, like, 15% actually does not look that bad. So, 9% is not actually that steep, it sounds steep, but it's, it's not going to impact your view to the people on the existing North Ocean Boulevard.
Right. But does it, well, we can ask the applicant, what is the existing grade on the, on the existing, on the existing driveway today that's on the north side?
Well, the existing grade should be on that plan.
There's an existing driveway.
The driveway has moved, so you have to account for that.
No, I understand.
But the existing, you see, like, 8.25, 709. It goes down to 5.4.
The question is, are close to 9% that you're talking?
I think so, it seems compatible to that.
Okay.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any questions relating to that one?
Anyone on this side?
Yeah, on the, on this, yeah, I do. So, and where is it, is that ingress and egress in conjunction to where it sits today?
I think it's south a little bit. I don't know the geometry, like, how the distance per se, but you can see, if you look at the existing, the proposed hatch of the asphalt, that north side of it, and then you look, I don't know, maybe about 10 or 15 feet, you can see how the existing approaches North Ocean Boulevard.
Kelly, it might help to go to the traffic triangle. It's in, it's an overlay on the actual existing aerial, and I think you can see...
Oh, yeah, so there you go.
It's been pushed south.
Yeah, there you can see the existing drive.
So, if you look at the 25 feet of the new, with, and you take that, and you go to that differential of the proposed and the new, I don't know, maybe that's about 15 feet. I don't have a scale on me, but...
It's going to line up, Ken, it looks like, with the entry to the ocean side.
Yeah, with the opposite side. So, so if you, if you look at that, thank you for, Christie, for pointing that overlay out. It does, one of the concerns I had was the curvature of the road, only because we drive by there every single day of my life, many times. The curvature of the road starts to turn, and where do you see that coming out of there? And it looks as though, the fact that it's a little bit south may have helped that line of sight coming, coming out of there, so it looks as though. So, the, the two walls on either side going into the ingress and egress, how high are those walls? Do we know?
The walls, they have as existing or modified per codes entrance. They don't really have a number on that. But they're not changing the grades dramatically, like, where the existing grade is now of the parking lots where it's going to be. You know, some of those grades...
So, the point is, how far do you have to go out into that in order to see safely north and south? Do we know?
Well, that's where they take that line of sight, that 14.5 feet, that's where the geometry of that DOT site distance triangle.
Right.
That's used, so that, where the stop bar is, that's where you should be able to see the traffic.
So, it really depends upon what is going to be going on in, in that right-of, I'll call it the right-of-way. I guess it is part of the right-of-way, isn't it?
The DOT right-of-way.
What type of landscaping, what type of...
Yeah, so they have the landscape plan. They don't, I don't, they have the... I looked at this history, is it? Yeah, so if you look, I mean, they don't have what's in the DOT right-of-way, but I looked online, and it looks like it's similar, but it's all within the property. So, if you look at where the stop bar is, which is not shown, they have the trench drains right there, so it's basically at the property line, which would be where the stop bar is. That's past all of the ocean clubs or this property's landscape. So, the only landscape that would be in that area would be DOTs, and I don't, I don't recall any DOT putting trees and big hedges in the right-of-way.
Well, as we all know, we're allowed to put stuff in there, it's all up and down A1A. So...
Well, it's not proposed.
Yeah.
I wouldn't quite say allowed to.
You know, I hope I'm making some sense.
No, I understand, honestly, that they're not proposing anything in the right-of-way. There are the big palm, like, sable palms, I looked it up, those are date, no, those are date palms, the ones that they're putting in those areas, or at least the large trees. Palms are, you know, what...
But those are on the property, they're not, they're not in that area.
I, yes.
No, they've got two of them in the, in the, in the area here.
Yeah.
I don't know if those are...
I could not find an existing landscape plan.
Well, there's one in our packet, right?
Well, there's a boundary survey, it does show some trees.
Proposed.
Proposed, yes, I was saying, usually we'll get a tree disposition, which is the existing landscape. I didn't see that in our packet.
On the page, there is a landscape plan that does show what appears to be a tree in...
Yes.
In a planter, I don't know what that is, but...
There are calusias, that's, I think, what's out there now, but they're not allowed to be over four foot. Per our code. And the two date palms are further in, not in the site triangle. I don't have a landscape person here.
I mean, again... Yeah, come on up.
Please, yeah.
I'll come back with my question.
Okay, let's go, we're still on number three, I think we're good. With the first two con, first two questions, Jeff, please.
For the record, Brian, on your insights studio, good to see you guys again.
Good to see you.
3601 PGA Boulevard, Paul and Sharon's. So, for the plantings in the right-of-way, we are not proposing anything in the right-of-way. Everything we're planting is within the site, it does not fall within the site triangle. So, we showed two different sightlines. One is the DOT required sightline that was exhibited, Kelly was showing. The other is the 25-foot site triangle that's required by the town code. Both of those are incorporated into the plans. So, there is existing vegetation in the DOT right-of-way. We're not to a point yet to go through DOT permitting, so once we get approval through the town, then we'll go through the full DOT permitting process. We do have preapproval from DOT, this letter's included in the presentation and in your packet for what they've seen, driveway alignment, site configuration, sightlines. They have approved that preliminarily, but we don't go through the permitting process until after we get through the town. So, when we go through that process, if any of that vegetation that's in the right-of-way happens to be too high, it can maybe be removed, we'll modify it, so we'll go through DOT permitting process to address those concerns.
Okay. Well, I, at risk of, I think that should be low-level grass, or something that, and, and, and give as much, as much visual north and south that you can, and then fan it, if you will.
Sure.
As much as possible.
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful, because it's now going to be ingress, and my concern is you got, you got, you know, people darting across, you've got bicyclists, you've got walkers, you've got bikes going up and down north side on that side of the road, and if you just go there right now and, and look, you could see that, you know, a potential issue, and I'm trying to avoid that.
Right.
So, as much low-level being grass, and then fan out if you want to put after that, I think that would be helpful, I think that's beneficial to everybody.
Right, so the, as you mentioned, you were mentioning the realignment of the driveway. So, it's moved about 89 feet to the south, if you looked at the north edge of it, to where the north edge now, it's about 89 feet. Purpose of that is to align with the intersection there, so from an engineer, and I'm not an engineer, but we do a lot of site planning from an engineering and design standpoint. The geometry of two driveways aligning is much better than slightly offset.
Not disagreeing with that.
So, we've done that for that reason, and then the town code does require a landscape buffer that's five feet wide, and it requires trees and a hedge, so we're meeting that requirement. That's inside the property, and as you can see on that sightline exhibit, everything outside of the property we're showing to be sod, so we'd like to work with DOT and say, hey, we just want to put sod in here.
So, you, maybe you'll understand my point, as you're going down that nine-foot grade, you have two walls on either side, you have trees, you have everything else, these people are coming in and out of there, and they're not going to see what's coming down until the, till late. They dart out just a little bit, and it's problematic. And I bring this up because we've had issues there in the past, so I'm trying to avoid that.
Yeah, we're certainly sensitive to that, we'll do everything we can to make sure, I mean, we're, we're meeting all the requirements, anything we can do further, so...
Yeah, I think we need to go beyond that point.
Everything in the sightline, we just want grass.
The curvature, they're not thinking about what's going on.
The age of the driver.
They're not thinking about what's happening in reality, they look at black and white, and we're looking at reality. So, like I said, I would suggest that, that as much low space, fairly grass, and then fan out from there would be very helpful, as much sightline, because, you know, quite frankly, you have a lot of older people that are going in and out of there as well. So, let's understand that.
Yeah.
So, it's, it's just...
So, again, the only thing...
It's a recipe for disaster.
Only thing we're proposing in that sightline is sod.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Question, question for you. So, you, you're moving the entry, who are about 90 feet approximately south, you said. So, this is a sheer driveway, right, with the ocean club to the south, right? So, in doing that, has anyone done a study here of the stacking that can occur through this driveway? For instance, at the, at the, you know, at the end of an evening at the ocean club, people tend to leave, get there about the same time and leave at the same time. Have you done any stacking review here of what that looks like with the existing ocean club today? So that, you know, say if you had, say you had 20 cars stacked up here, someone couldn't then drive in and take up, theoretically, drive in and take a left? There'd be a stacking problem there.
Right.
Has anyone looked at that and studied that?
I mean, it's designed to meet standard parking requirements, but no, we haven't studied stacking as it's a sort of, you know...
Well, this is a sheer, this is a sheer parking, this is a shared access point, right?
Right.
So, has anyone looked at the, the component of the shared access point?
I mean, we've looked at the circulation routes, and the, the shared access is actually the same as it is today, except just that driveway that's northern has moved slightly to the south, but no, we haven't looked at, I'm trying to tell you, have you looked at that, I'm sorry?
There's not going to be any more traffic than exists today.
But the, the entry has moved 90 feet to the south.
Yeah.
So, it gives you more, it gives you more runway to put, to try to get out there, and now you're doing, and by the way, that currently, it's, it's right in, right out, or excuse me, left out, right out. This is now full move, a full movement here. So, someone that's coming into this entryway, right, and then wants, and if they're stacking here, and if they want to take a left or a right, how do they get across the stacking?
But the entry there is mostly going to be the people in the condominium.
Yeah, that's the condominiums.
Ocean Club entrance is still going to be southern to go to the...
I understand, but still, that, you'd be surprised, I bet, I'd like Ken's point earlier, you'd be surprised who might use this all of a sudden, right? In the summertime, when no one's around, I sneak in the, the north entrance, right, even though it's a one-way drive, I mean, I just, it's just, it's easier.
What?
I, 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 my point is, my, my point, my point is, this is a, this is, there's a lot going on here all of a sudden with the full access movement. Currently, we just have a left, left out, yeah, we've got a one-way out today, right? And the stacking, I'm just asking, has anyone reviewed this internally to see how this works?
Brian Kelly, for the record, traffic engineer, was sent in white. We haven't necessarily done a formal stacking exhibit or study in that regard, but what I will say is we have reviewed the site circulation, and we find it to be, you know, meeting standards. The other component I want to mention is, it is a reduction in trips, so we're actually reducing units, so there will be a little bit of reduction in trips associated with that. But probably more importantly, the, the question you have, and I, I recognize it, if, if people are queued out waiting to get out onto Ocean Drive, you would still be able to turn into that site and make a right turn.
Right.
So, any queuing that they would block would be the one side of the road, so we want to prevent anybody from getting into the site, so I don't really think it'd be an issue. This is also something the DOT looks at as well, when we actually went and did our formal pre-approval letter. They actually look at minimum kind of step-back throw-distance requirements as well, and we did get our preapproval letter, they were satisfied with the site design when, when we presented it to them.
Okay. Having just been at the property to the south in heavy periods of time, we're just talking about what you're, I love what you're saying, and thank you very much, but what happens in reality? Right, what happens in reality when people, there's 20 cars leaving at the same time, right? Now, they don't leave all at the same time, but people, and, 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 and it just, it feels tight to me, and it feels like that's a, that could be a choke point that could have a problem. If it's not, if there's not some internal circulation, yes, the circulation, but it's more tied into the new access point.
Sure.
Which is two-way, right?
Yes, and it's two-way currently, yeah.
No, it isn't.
It's only one-way currently.
Only one way out.
How, how was it when the, the ocean house north was there, the, the building that...
It's one-way out.
One-way out.
Was it always one-way out? Even when the condominium, the prior condominium?
It's always one-way out, one-way in on the north, one-way out on the south.
We can do that, we can recommend that that be done.
Because there's circulation that flows through that again, you know?
Right.
So, is it signed to be one-way, because it's certainly designed to be two-way? You have 90-degree parking there, you have...
No, it's, it's always been one-way.
That's about a 40-foot wide driveway.
Yeah, it's hu, it's a huge truck, and that, that's what we were asking earlier about the, the grade, there's that about 9%, and it gives you enough distance, although still people queue and wait to get out, you know, especially in the, in the season, it gets busy on A1A.
Right.
Right, it doesn't, it's not like you can just jump out on the road, and, and I just think this is, this, this should be reviewed and, and, and looked at, you know?
Does the neighbor to the south, which is the ocean club, is there any right of access to ocean club's entrance to the south for the applicant?
Aye. Good question.
There's a shared access way across there, so it would be implied that the condominium owners could come through that access as well, yes.
So, you're suggesting keep it the one-way traffic?
I didn't say that today, I'm just saying, has there been a review of the internal entry and exit point that's being proposed?
Yeah.
And how it flows with the internal traffic of not all the ocean club, but the, the proposed apartments?
Right, and, and so, while they say it meets standards, there are some of us that have a unique understanding of what's there.
Yes.
So, why, is there any reason we couldn't keep it the same flow that exists today?
Just take it, to just left out, right out, one-way out?
Left out.
Certainly something to consider.
Here, here's, it is something to consider, but here's, here's another alternate, and I know this is, it's, it's minor, but it, it might alleviate what you're talking about. And that is, if you had a, if on the site, we institute a stop right at the, before you get to the entrance, so every car has to stop before it makes a left into the egress. That allows the uncoming, uncoming, incoming traffic to go across and over. So, they would have to look at that point, they'd have to pay attention as to who's coming through. Does that make sense?
Correct, and when we actually go do our final engineering and design plans, we typically would put stop bar in what the northbound and southbound direction there to give ingress free flow, so they come in, they're not blocked, it's those other directions internal that stop, and that's kind of the best way of traffic management standpoint.
Can we make that mandatory?
Sure, it could be conditional.
Would that satisfy...
Explain that to me one more time.
So, you would have, if I can, right across from the ingress and egress, on the south side, you'd have a stop for those traffic going north before it egresses. Put it, put it down there, thank you. Before it egresses, you would stop just before the ingress egress. Does that make sense?
Like an intersection.
And like an intersection.
I think also, it would actually help the...
The stacking issue?
You wouldn't have the stacking, because the stacking would be in the parking lot and not in the ingress egress. Because they're, they're coming in and then going to circle around... Because they're, they're coming in and then gonna circle around to go north into the, to the garage. So they're gonna come through, make a left, and then go to the garage, get stopped there, and come around. That should help. That should satisfy, in my view, I mean, I'm limited.
That was gonna be my point as well, which is, it'll assist the homeowners actually pulling in, because they can then make that left turn, because that stop sign will hold that traffic.
That make sense?
Agreed, it's a great suggestion.
Is that, is that acceptable to the applicant? So if we make that a condition, that there has to be a hard stop there, okay?
And your further review of anything else you think would make sense too? Because I think it'd be important for you to see what happens next door on, on, in reality at times, right? Here.
I implore?
Yeah. I implore, can we talk about that? Tara, you want to bring that up? Thank you, Ken.
Okay, four, provide additional grading and propose retaining wall along the FDT right-way for maintenance. So this is, we already discussed this, there was no change or may be at the south end, but the, the grades seem the same. And there's no new sidewalk proposed there, so the FDT right-way should not be changing at all.
Okay, okay.
Five, provide additional grading, confirm the project will match existing grades, traveling driveway and connections to the north and south properties. They did provide additional grading on the inlets, on the connections to the south. They didn't to the north, but the only thing there is that sidewalk, and it appears that the grades will be very similar, and they'll be able to get from the curb of the driveway to the existing.
Show, do me a favor, show that on there.
Yeah.
So, south, or down. Down. All right, here we go. All right, so that north property, that's where that sidewalk is, that's where the septic system is. You can see that a retaining wall is there closer, like just east of that septic system, the, not that far. All right, so there's the retaining walls there, so that shouldn't be a problem.
That's on the north side, the retaining wall there?
Yeah, the bolt, and then that stops just east of the tanks, the septic system tanks.
Yeah.
So then, west of that, the grades will be very similar, or they should be able to make, match grades without any problems. But that'll be further, they'll be, they'll have to provide a cross-section at that point in the final design. So that's.
It's pretty level today, so it's gonna stay pretty level.
It'll stay pretty level.
Okay.
They probably will have to have some kind of swale, yes.
Yeah, the, the sidewalk's about forty feet long, and it's over, it's gonna go up about 1.5 feet over forty feet, so it'll be like a four, three to four percent grade.
Oh, that's great. And how about on the south side?
So if you go to the south side, they did provide further grades where the connection of the new asphalt and the, and the old asphalt.
Yes.
You can see the eight-point-five and the nine-point-nine, those are matching existing. And then the.
Matching existing like they are today?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the new, they showed like high points going to the inlets, and then further within the property too, they showed more grades and grades of the inlets. To show that it could.
Are you expecting any water flow coming from the south property onto your property?
I don't have those grades.
No, I understand.
You just raised a good question, incidentally.
Yes.
Yeah, what, what about the drainage coming off the?
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not the civil engineer on record, but I know the civil engineering plans, I'm with the firm. There may be a little bit of drainage coming from there, but we've incorporated all of that into our design. So it has been, we have reviewed it. Everything, right now, sheet flows down to Ocean Boulevard, and we now, you know, we're actually providing exfiltration trench and inlets to accommodate that drainage runoff.
Well, that's, that's the good part that concerns me. So you said everything flows down to Ocean Boulevard, that's the part that concerns me. Is there, are we retaining the waters?
Yes, we have exfiltration trench designed in our plans, yes, yes.
And that's big enough to accommodate the amount of structure I take?
Yes.
And it's incorporated, again, the flow coming off of the southern property?
Yes.
Okay, because there is gonna be some, right?
Sure.
No question about it. And you have those calculations, if you wanted to see them?
Yes.
Okay. I think it'd be good for the commissioners to see this kind of stuff, too, make sure they tighten up. And/or, Tara, you have that, would you, okay?
Okay, so number six, add pros roof drainage, the civil plans and confirm that they're be connected to the pros drainage system. So there, they added those roof drains. You can see several lines coming from the building on where it is right now. It's like at that north inlet, there's a line coming from the building. There's a line coming from the building on the east of that north boundary of the building. You can see going to the inlet. And then on the east side of the building, go down a little more, Kelly, you can see that line going from the inlet to the building.
So the, so the roof drains?
The roof drains go to the drainage system, which is with the exfiltration.
Where the open lawn is?
Yes.
So all the roof drain is going?
No, not all, that's why there's lines throughout the system.
Can the applicant talk, take us through the drainage, please?
Well, the, the civil inherent is in here.
Brian, Brian, I, I, I can speak, and certainly she can speak to it just to review the engineering plans, but we typically don't do the, the roof drains until later on, after we get a little bit further into the process. But there are several roof drains that we're now showing preliminary and subjective final design that then do connect into our, into our drainage system.
Right, so you've got the exfiltration trench on the east side of the property?
Correct, there's also some on the west side as well.
Right, so, and I see with the squiggly line, you know, about two-thirds of the way down on the east side, that all drains, I would assume, into the exfiltration on the east side of the property?
Correct.
And the other squiggly line drains, drains down to the exfiltration on the west side of the property?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
That line right there that you just did, that's the exfiltration system right there, right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks. And it goes to where, once it gets in there, or does it go down?
Well, see, the squiggly line here goes this way.
No, this is something we're concerned about.
This, it comes down like, it goes into this system.
Yeah, where, where does the water go once it's here?
On the west side, in the parking lot.
On the west side.
On the west, the west side, eventually it falls into the FDOT system.
We don't have an FDOT system there, I hate to tell you.
So every property in Ocean Ridge has a trench drain at the property line to take the driveway runoff into the exfiltration trench of this, or into the stormwater system of the property. So having that trench drain, that's what we do to mitigate it. That's really the best we can do, the trench drain. They actually move their trench drain, so they're gonna have to have another one or move it back to the property line. On north, on, on this road, North Ocean Boulevard, we've had properties that had two exfiltration because of the slope. We have one at the property to catch whatever was left, and then they put one further up because of the slope. So it actually is kind of like a twofold system. So here you can see that at the driveway, those hatch line, basically that is the, that's, that's the driveway trench drain.
That's the driveway trench.
All you should have if you've improved your house.
Sure, or a swale.
We've got one, right.
Well, no, it's not a swale, but.
No, no, I said, or a swale, they're gonna have either a trench or a swale.
No.
So there's a swale there too?
No, no, because DOT, they don't require a swale.
Right, but you're saying every home in, in Ocean Ridge.
And we have that, that's what the trench drains for.
Okay.
DOT will catch that little bit. We don't allow, that's why we ask for the trench drain, so they can go there and then it gets back into the system. We're not trying to just free flow into DOT right away.
And, and you guys have reviewed their calculations and all of their information here, and confirm that they have, or they're complying with the runoff that can occur here? And they got a hole, because they got a hole, you're basically.
Have you guys ever been up there when it pours in the summertime, when it's flooded? Have you ever seen it?
I don't think they have a trench drain right now, or.
No, no, I understand that, so, so do you feel that the trench drain that they're proposing and the exfiltration system that they have is going to handle the runoff from the roof, from the parking lot? Because historically, there was a lot of land there. So now, you have all that water that's being captured on the roof of the structure, and it's going into this area. And ultimately, it might, I understand that, let me just explain. And then ultimately, it's gonna flow into A1A. And we know right now, in that area, it's a problem. We know that today. So we wanna, we don't want to add to the problem. So we can't assume that the FDOT has a system to collect water, because there isn't one.
I, I don't know about FDOT, that's why we don't, FDOT has their own permitting. They do have a utility permit, which is basically a driveway permit, that they look at the drainage as well. All we can do is ask for the property to hold their first inch, which we require everybody to do.
Right.
So their first inch is gonna be more, because the property is greater.
Right.
And that's why they have more exfiltration than a usual.
Okay, so you feel that this is sufficient to handle, that's all massive?
They're doing what is code, so they're doing more than what they have now.
I appreciate, it's more than what they have now, I can appreciate that.
Well, there's nothing.
What I want to know is, is it gonna handle, what's there?
By code, it must.
It must by code, okay.
I'm pretty sure they're doing more conservative anyway, when I look at the calculations.
I mean, I don't think they're gonna want to have that flooding out front, quite frankly, if they're, if they're going into their own property.
If you're talking about FDOT, then that's, if DOT is having an issue in their right-of-way, we can't require them to do anything. We're only requiring the property to meet code.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't want to add to the problem, though.
We're not adding, we're taking away what's now, because they don't have a system.
And I see the exfiltration trench is the actual length and size to be determined during final design, is that?
Right, but they do have a preliminary in there.
Okay.
So they're meeting code with the preliminary exfiltration calculations.
Okay. Any other comments there from that one? Okay, keep going, please.
So that was six. Seven, provide additional grading, confirm the proposed access road and retaining wall between the projects and the Ocean Club of Florida, and the Tampa access easement is suitable for their agreement. I don't know. I did not see any.
That's a retaining wall, that's a retaining, that's a retaining wall on the south here, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's more of a curb, but yeah, that's the retaining wall to the south on that access road. I didn't see a response to this comment, so I don't.
Do you, can you, applicant, can you talk to us about that, please?
Sure, so this, this plan's obviously been reviewed and vetted with the Ocean Club and their representatives and their attorney as well. So they have agreed to everything that you see before you today. We have a written agreement on some, some specific items. This one item is not actually addressed, because it was a, a minor item that we, you know, reviewed and discussed. The grade differences there, just looking at the civil plan, looks like the finished floor of the existing building there is about thirteen-point-six.
Yes.
And then that road ends up being up at about, you know, fifteen as it comes through there. So we're holding back about a foot and a half of there on our property, just to make that access road accessible all the way to the east end of the property. So it's only about eighteen inches high.
Okay.
At the highest point.
What is the, can you, can you talk about the road itself? Let me say road, what, what is the?
It's just a stabilize, it's gonna be asphalt stabilized, it's gonna be a roadway surface, and it's really just for, for access around the building for.
Okay, okay.
Maintenance purposes.
Okay. And that road is split equally between your property and the property of the south, plus or minus?
Yeah, very close, that, that property line.
It's about a fifteen, it's about a thirty-foot road, is that correct?
No, it's only ten feet wide.
Oh, excuse me, ten feet.
Yeah, so it's just a one-way in and out for service purposes.
Okay, okay.
So you said, talk about the ocean, do they have a, your exfiltration system, you know, drainage is an issue in this town.
Yes.
So are they tied into that as well with their parking lot? Are they gonna be able to tie into that? Or is it gonna, at one point, if they ever redevelop, if they ever do anything, are they gonna be able to tie in so that all the drainage works in conjunction with this unity?
I prefer one of the engineers to speak to the drainage. I, I mean, yes, in the future, they would probably provide their own drainage system, their own exfiltration trench, but if it needs connecting, so.
Now, mind you, they only have this one north entrance. There's an ingress and egress on the south, so they're gonna have to deal with it a little differently, obviously.
Right.
But there is going to be this tie-in so that it, so that it all works.
Well, I mean, there'll be a little bit that flows into ours based on this plan. If they ever go and redevelop in the future, it'll be up to them how they do that drainage system, but they would incorporate probably exfiltration trench as well to handle their.
Do you see any issue with respect to what their property sits and in conjunction with, since we're talking about this unity of control and unity? It's all supposed to be looked at, it's one parcel now, right? So is, you see any problem with what's going on over there, and these will be the property to the north?
No, we made sure when we did this design that it accommodated, took into account.
Thank you.
It, it's interesting, because I, I knew there was gonna be a tie-in to some type of road, but I didn't realize it's gonna be an asphalt road that goes through there, right? And, um, it's there now. Not, no, that road, not, in, in between the north, in between the proposed building and the Ocean Club, there's no, there's no, there's no, there's no road there today.
There's no current road there?
No, there's still a road, no, there's a walkway there apparently, but there's no road there today.
Okay.
That's interesting.
You see that?
Yeah, so.
There's gonna be, there's actually gonna be a road there. Can you, can you, can you put in any, you know, like the pavers that allow, you know? Yeah, semi-perish pavers, something like that.
Yeah, we're totally open to whatever we need to do to beautify. I mean, it's kind of a multi-purpose path, but a car can hit back there if needed.
Yes, yes, no, I got that.
Yeah, we could do a purgy's favor, decor favor or something.
Would help out with the drainage as well, probably, and be in a situation.
No grass on roads.
Yeah, probably, but still, at least something, right?
I, I agree, I mean, you can, there's lots of things you can do there, it doesn't necessarily have to be hard asphalt.
Yes.
Absolutely.
If you look at some options there, we appreciate that, okay?
I think that's beneficial to both properties, frankly.
Last item, number eight done? Tara?
Confirm the applicant acknowledges that the FDOT permit will be required. I think we already discussed that today, but they, they know that that's, that's more of a statement.
Fine.
So we did have our pre-application meeting since the last time we were here before you guys, and they gave us pre-approval on the driveway connection. And it also states in there that we're required to go through and get all of our utility drainage permits.
That's not DEP.
Oh, that's DEP, I'm sorry, DEP. Yes, so we don't go to DEP until after we have a letter from you guys. They won't accept an application until the local municipality has approved the project.
Thank you, okay, appreciate that. The applicant, would you like to make any other comments or?
I have a very good presentation that I would like to report, just to address some of the other. I won't, I won't really touch on the engineering, because we hit that pretty deep there, but. So this is just a quick glimpse, this is our cover slide, as you can see the updated architectural style that we'll talk a lot more detail about, and the architect is here to discuss the changes to the proposed elevation. Again, two-point-four acres on the east side of Ocean Boulevard there. RHM, so high multifamily, or high-density multifamily residential. The existing twenty-two units, so just so we can, you know, kind of get a glimpse of what was there today, we're reducing the intensity from twenty-two units down to fifteen. And fifteen multifamily units, max density we could get, based on code, is twenty-four units, so we're only asking for fifteen. There's the existing site plan, the site plan didn't change much. Basically, same thing that you guys saw before, but the changes are more to the architecture and the elevations. But the floor plan of the building stayed the same, and the site circulation. So there's the architectural elevation in the front of the building, or the Bermuda-style architecture that's in keeping with the, with surroundings in the, in the existing neighborhood. We're proposing, you know, nice large state palms to scale the building. We've got some other lower story vegetation, but nice stately palms there. And then the rear of the building, more of an open look, has same architectural style, obviously. Coconut palms and some lower vegetation around the pool, but primarily trying to keep it open to leave views to the ocean at them. I'll let Nilo speak a little bit more about the architectural elevations. One thing to point out that the. One thing to point out that the, there's no, no need for a parapet roof, so now the roof screening is occurring through the mansard-style roof there. Now, next slide, please. We talked about the sight lines, so I don't know that it's, you know, much to say there other than this has been reviewed and approved by FDOT as discussed. And there is the FDOT pre-approval letter. Again, we will go through full permitting with FDOT, and anything that comes up during that time, we'll address. Civil engineering plans that we've already been looking at, so, you know, we addressed the eight comments there. With that, I'll probably flip back to the architecture. Maybe Nilo can just speak a little bit more about the architectural style.
Hi, good morning. I'm Nilo Frijemel with Speed Our Work for the record, over at 285 Daniel Boulevard. And I'd like to thank you guys for your time this morning. Maybe we could jump to the rendering side, just to be briefly on the architecture. Thank you guys for the comments at the last board meeting, and really kind of pushing this more towards Bermuda-influenced style, that's more in keeping with the rest of the character of Ocean Ridge. We also took inspiration from the Cape Dutch buildings that were sitting in today, and that was why we incorporated the Dutch gables into some of the more prominent elements of the architecture. As Brian mentioned, this is really kind of a further adaptation of the sketch that he shared with you guys last month, and really ties this architecture better in, in character with the rest of the town of Ocean Ridge. Those main volumes in the middle are accentuated with some Bermuda shutters. And then as we move out towards the balconies on either side of the Dutch gables, we incorporated a variety of corbelled openings and columns on the, on the top floor in order to lighten that up. We did keep the, you know, the glass railings on the primary balconies, really to open up that view towards the ocean to the east. And then for consistency, we brought that same balcony, that balcony handrail design over the west side of the building as well. As Brian mentioned, we did use this as an opportunity to eliminate the screen wall itself, to incorporate the mechanical screening into the mansard roof that's around the perimeter of the building. Did you just jump to that last? No, sorry.
Go back up to, yeah, keep going up. This is the old one.
The few more.
That last render. And as I mentioned, we kept the ocean side of this nice, nice and light and transparent, really to maximize those views out towards the ocean. And I'm happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you for taking the time and relooking at that. I think if we had a comparison of the before and after, there'd be a noticeable difference. I hope everyone else feels that there is a positive difference there. Maybe not, but it seems as though there is.
Thank you for your comments last month.
Thank you.
It really helped us move that in the right direction, so thank you all.
Any other comments from the applicant? Okay. I'd like to open the floor to public comment, please.
Terry Brown, Harbor Drive South. I'm not trying to create a problem here for anyone. Ken Khalil is someone you can thank and blame for any comments I make regarding the crosswalk. The folks living in this condominium want to walk on the west side of the road up and down. People walk and jog up and down. They got to get across A1A, right? And there's a crosswalk there, which, by the way, is not ADA compliant. It has stairs. So I don't know whose problem this is, but you're going to have, maybe there's some people that live in the condo that don't want to ever walk, but there's a tennis facility still, isn't there, on the other side? And this is a common element that they're going to be sharing.
No.
No, no, not going to be shared in the tennis.
That's a private club. They might be joining the club.
Yeah, but, okay, so, so that would be a problem, getting across the street to use the facility. But to walk, they're not going to walk off their driveway. As you pointed out, it's very dangerous, even though the traffic is supposed to slow down at 25 at the curb, before you get to the curb, it doesn't often. So I don't know whose responsibility for that is. Do the people who are building this new building want to look at the crosswalk? It needs to be bed with signage, flashing lights. No, I'm just kidding, but maybe the flashing light types that they have down on Gulfstream, because there's, there's going to be backup people coming out, making a left to go south. You're going to run right into the crosswalk. So that's my observation on pedestrian safety.
What do you see, where is, where do you have it today?
The crosswalk is right, right, Ken knows.
No, I'm talking about where you, where you live today. Is a crosswalk handicap accessible?
Yes, because it's.
It's all, it's all one level.
And it has landing pads. That's to thank Jeff Pugh and Ken as well, when he was on the commission with me. We were working on the south end, trying to get better crosswalks.
Yeah.
And Ken did a good job pushing the line up on the Ocean Club. You got that done, right? Don't say anything. But it's, it's still not ADA compliant. I don't know how you deal with that problem. Not that the people are going to complain, but I see it as a problem with traffic coming down that road.
I think you're right. People are not going to go to the existing crosswalk, because they're going to go right across it.
You get a lot of traffic from that part.
Yeah, I guess.
A lot of traffic. And they come down that road really fast. So it does need some enhanced safety features, in my opinion. I'm always looking for a safe way to get across the street.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
I, I think you raised a good point.
All right, all right.
No, you have. I, I don't know what the solution is, but without, without.
I wanted to bring it up in case something happens later, and I'll say, I told you so.
That's the commissioners, not us, Terry.
Where's our Simmons and White person? You're the, you're the traffic expert here, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, the, there is, the existing pedestrian crosswalk is not being modified from its current location. There is a, there is a current connection to the site on the south side, so just south of Acho, our property line. You can see it right there. That's the existing, that's the existing connection point for that crosswalk to the west side of the road. Things can be done to enhance the pedestrian crossing, and there's different ways that can be done. You can do, there's more high emphasis striping, there's different signage that can be done, there's like the rapid flashing beacons. Those types of things can be done to enhance the pedestrian crossing, but we're not proposing to change its current location on the access in any way.
So for, for understanding purposes, we, the reality of it is, you have the maisonettes to the north, that all gonna, you're right, they're going to go walking right up that driveway. There's no question. Now, there's not this flood of people doing that.
No.
But there's going to be a natural tendency, as it is today, that's where people walk up. I mean, it's, I don't know, we, you know, when the Ocean Club, I guess, comes and does their re-site plan, they're going to have to redo how they deal with that crosswalk, because you're right, it's going to have to be dealt with, and it's going to have to be ADA compliant and all that other stuff. So it's going to add that, that burden to them, that's for sure.
It's not so hard to make it ADA compliant, you just have to have a ramp.
Yeah, just a ramp, but that's in the middle of that property. But it's not going to eliminate the fact that there's going to be people, as much as people can try to encourage them not to do that, they're going to be going right up there.
Well, it's a nice, that's a nice walk along there.
Is there a?
People are going to want to do it.
Is that sidewalk to the north, the sidewalk to the north, that's, is that going to be accessed by Ocean House North?
Yes.
Okay, so that was part of their, their proposal, that they get access? So they're not going to be walking around the road? They're going to?
And they also have access on the east side of the building as well.
Okay, all right. So it's really that, that, that's either going to the tennis club, you know, for those members, or, you know, back and forth, but.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, closing public comment. Board comment? Mark?
Well, I think the applicant did a good job of turning something around that we thought was more consistent with what we have throughout Ocean Ridge and north and south, but so I was pleased to see it. I guess the Dutch colonial application is, looks a little, I don't know how to describe it. It looks like it was an add-on to me versus, I'm just wondering if it's really needed. I'm not an architect, and I don't want to tell you that. I have an opinion that's better than your trained eye, but it just, it just doesn't seem like it fits the building. I don't know how to describe it, just what sort of was added on.
And so it, it breaks up the massing in between kind of each one of the volumes. Otherwise, without some type of vertical orientation, it would really start to feel like a building that kind of just rambles, right, without any focal points. And it, it starts to break up not just the exterior definition of the volume, but also the interior program. It, it brings the punched openings down to a smaller window size and removes the balconies where you wouldn't necessarily need them in the floor plan. And I think it adds just the right amount of variety to the overall style of the architecture. Kind of grounds it here a little bit more.
It's, it's not a big building to begin with, right? So with 15 units and, you know, the amount of actual distance you have and width on your elevations and your offset already, right, with, with that front facade in a couple of places. I just wonder if it's, you think it's needed, but it's just, it's not a big building.
Yeah, I see where you're coming from. And then, you know, I think in our opinion, we feel like it, it adds just that right amount of variety to the elevation, and it would otherwise, I think, feel a little static without something like that on, on those two primary elevations.
And how about the rear elevation in particular? Yeah, it's, it seems, yeah, it is much larger, right? You're encompassing two balcony areas there for each of those.
We are. Yeah, the massing is slightly, is slightly different as we come around to the east side here. So those, those take up, those take up a wider, you know, wider portion of the elevation. It's going to be two, two equal bays wide instead of two smaller bays wide by the front elevation.
Okay.
I don't have any comments? I think we've exhausted a number of them.
Okay. Jason?
No, looks good.
My comment is similar to Mark's a little bit. It, and I appreciate what you've done so far, but to me, it still looks a little bland. We had an application in here two, a month ago, a residential application, which, you know, we've asked them to refine it, to give it a little bit more of a, a little, a little bit more flavor, instead of just two, these look like two big columns. You've got vertical columns here, right? And, and we're going to see that application when this is done. But I sense that there, and I, I like what you've done, I'm not saying like, but it feels like it could have a little refinement to it, right? Just a, a little refinement to, to, I get it, you got the roof color, but, you know, the, the roof color and the, and the exterior color very similar, et cetera. But I, I just saw those elements, just those two elements sitting there, and I was like, oh, we had, we've used this term before, almost looks like an office building a little bit, right? And so it just, I didn't know if there's any way you could refine it and fine-tune it a little bit, not, I'm not asking a lot here, but just fine-tune it a little bit to give it a little, either, because it feels like it's a Cape Dutch, but is it a Cape Dutch? I'm not sure, right? So it's got this, it's got, to me, this, this, this in-between feeling. I'm not sure. Is it Cape Dutch, you know, British from Bermuda? Is it Cape Dutch, British colonial? Is it, what, what are we talking about here?
Yeah, and, and I, I think some of the, some of the subtle details that we incorporated don't become readily apparent when we're looking at a rendering from this scale, too. So I would classify it as, as a Cape Dutch-inspired Bermuda, not a colonial. But if we were going colonial, we probably have exposed rafter tails around the detail, or we'd have a little more variation in, in, you know, some of the handrails and that sort of thing. One of the things that we could look at doing is on some of the secondary windows, you know, around the areas, you can see it here in kind of the top left of the west elevation, is, you know, we can start to break those up and incorporate shutters on either side of those windows. I think that would add a little bit of additional detailing and texture. It would tie in some of the color from the Bermuda shutters that.
On, on, as you're looking at this, on the left side?
On the left side.
Yeah.
Right.
Because you've got them on the right side in the lower building.
Right, right. And I think we could do something similar as that, as that elevation turns the corner, right? We have a window stack right there. They could also incorporate the same detail. And then the other thing we could look at, not unlike the building that we're in now, the, the Dutch gables actually have a little molding profile.
Yes.
That runs around the top.
Yes.
Of that scallop. And I think we could pretty easily incorporate something like that to the top of this. If it adds just a little subtle shadow and texture.
Yeah.
To the top of that gable end, then I think it would, you know, ground it a little more in a building that already exists in town today.
And on the elevation, the, the, the north exterior elevation, I mean, you feel that is kind of, it's kind of plain Jane, right? And I know you don't want to do too much because you're, you've got neighbors to the, to the side of you there, but is that just, I mean, that, we look at these things in the past, they, we don't want big, huge walls, right? And this is, looks like a big, huge wall.
Yeah, so I, I think the incorporation of shutters on this elevation would go a very long way. We did, you kind of take the, take the Dutch gable here, and we corbelled that back as we came down to the second floor.
Yes.
And you can see that bumps out a little bit, and then has a window centered underneath that, and, you know, maybe we could refine that detail a little bit, just to give it a little more weight.
Yes.
And I think between that and the incorporation of shutters around the window assemblies would start to really tie that in. It's kind of more of a secondary elevation, but also not feel like the back of the building.
So you would tie that in on the north and south sides of the building?
Yes.
Those shutters where the windows are?
Because, can you see on this one, see, it's all?
Yeah, no, no.
And we don't, we don't, we discourage that, right, where we're sitting here. We discourage that kind of look, right?
So the, the front lawn, you have the, the shutters, if you will, and then it is, is part of your issue looking at, which I agree with you, if that's the case, the, the top of this, above these shutters, is this the part that you're talking about softening?
Right, so we could soften that top floor, and, and instead of Bermuda shutters that sit above like a transference link up, we could do shutters on the side. There would be another way to incorporate that, but I would, I was proposing some additional shutters on that top floor, and, and then bifold shutters on either side of the windows you see to the far left.
Okay. That would certainly break it up, and that was, you know, keeping in concert with our prior comments.
Yes. I'd love to see that.
Great. I think it's a great solution.
Yep.
Thank you guys for the suggestions.
Okay. Commissioners, what would you like to do?
Next slide.
Okay, are we going to ask them to come back? We're going to make a motion for them to come back with the revised plan? Are we going to approve the plan with the, all the changes we've talked about today?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, personally, I'm okay with them, if we pass it conditionally.
Yes.
With that stuff, and that, so this way, when they take it to the commission, it's what our comments, this way you're not coming back again. I don't really see the need for them to come back. Does anybody here feel the need?
No.
Do not.
No.
So if.
As long as one of us is at the city commission meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yes.
What I would recommend is to move it forward. I think there are three main comments that the board had would be to, one, include the hard stop at the property to, before vehicles enter the ingress and egress area or the egress area.
And to review it further, please, Kristy. We don't want them to review this internal, not just circulation, but internal ingress, egress.
Okay.
Between the property, the south property and the north property, please.
Review it. The next comment was to consider previous options for the asphalt driveways that are on property line. And then the third comment was to find detail, some of the architecture with the shutters and molding, to add additional detail to it.
Brian, yes?
Well, I would go yes, but in concert with what he's presented. So that detail is what, what, we're going along with what was presented by the architect. So it's not just that, it's more what they proposed. And in keeping with the tenor of the conversations that were taking place, both on the ingress and egress, all those conditions that we talked about, you know, incorporate in those plans. So it's a little bit more, simply put, Kristy, I would agree with you, but I think it's more involved than that. So I think.
So then you should make the motion.
I would make the motion. Real simple. I move that we go ahead and approve with sending it to the commission based upon the conditions that we talked about today and the tenor of those conversations, including a change in the design that incorporates what the architect has proposed. We, you know, the commission or this council agrees with to, to review the stacking, if you will, and traffic pattern of the parking lot to include a hard stop at the intersection of the parking lot before the ingress and egress. To change the sidewalk or the pathway, driveway, whatever you want to call it, that's in between the two buildings, between the two property lines, if you will, from a hard asphalt to a pervious, a pervious substance. And that could be a variety of things. And what are there other comments that the, have we addressed all the other? Pausing my motion to make sure that we've addressed all the other comments that are given by staff to the plan. If they're all addressed, then I can move forward with those conditions passed, yeah.
Yes.
May I just ask that the motion also include the exception to the height for the screening for the mechanical equipment?
Because it's a new roof line, I thought we don't have to do that anymore.
It still exceeds the 44-foot height.
Okay, but that's with the roof structure.
That's with the Mansard roof structure to screen the equipment.
Right, it's already screen, the equipment's going to be screened by the roof structure.
Correct.
By the Mansard roof, okay. So that will be included in my motion. Thank you for pointing that out. But it's not going to be exposed. It's already going to be taken care of.
Correct.
And I'd just like to add to that motion that the elevations that he described do include softening of those particular areas with moldings and shutters.
Submove?
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your. Thank you for your time. I think we're fine. We're just going to review this, this last one, the changes that they've made here. Okay, let's move on to 11 Osprey Drive, continuation as well. How are you doing today?
Good, how are we doing?
Good. Yeah, ex parte, please. At this time, any ex parte communication? Should either be disclosed by identifying the subject of the communication and the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place or any correspondence to be provided to the town clerk and a part of the public record. In addition, each member of the commission might identify the existence of any investigation or site visits he or she has conducted or any expert opinions received and disclose any conflicts of interest on this matter. Do we have any of those? Kelly, can you swear in the, who's going to give testimony, please?
Well, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear in firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? When you're called forward, please state your name and answer clearly for the record and whether or not you've been sworn in, and please speak directly into the microphone.
Thank you. Corey, any changes on this application from your standpoint?
No.
Tara, any applications, changes from your standpoint? Did we talk about drainage last time?
No, it was just the landscape.
Landscape and the physical, the exterior of the building. Okay, nothing on Manny's side as well. Applicant, please.
I'm James Robson. I'm the project architect for Reynold South Architects. I'm in charge of this project here. Obviously, we're kind of revisiting this project from our last meeting to address the comments and some suggestions from prior meeting. First things first, we did revise our landscape plan with the correct landscape plan, indicating that we also are showing a potocarpius screening that our neighbor, one of the neighbors was concerned about. I did point out to him through several emails that the revised plans clearly states that there is a potocarpius hedge along the south side of the property line, which will be screened for him, which was his main concern. And he is satisfied with that. Not here today, left through emails. He was satisfied with the potocarpius.
Thank you for doing that, by the way.
And then the other concern we had was the Dutch gables. We had on the corner about the, I believe it was Ken that brought the comment that it was too monumental on the corner. So with that, we went ahead and kind of lessened that with getting rid of the Dutch gables and applying hip roof onto the corners. And then we also added some horizontal banding, which will kind of help scale down the house on that corner.
Looks different.
Yes.
And it's a roof, do you have the same roof materials as you had previously as well?
Yes, yes, so it'll be cement flat tiles.
I just have to commend Stomp Architects for everybody down here. It's just really a great transition from multi-person to many alerts for other.
Thank you. Good job.
Okay, applicant, anything else for you?
No.
Okay, great. Can we, any, thank you very much. Public comment? Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, seeing no closed public comment.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
That was good, right? Yeah, during the meeting. Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone. We had a lot of comment on that, and I think we're giving something to the commissioners that they don't.